...budget now called the order. Do we recall vote two?
Jay.
Here.
Here.
President.
Now, originally our budget would present at six point five million. DOJ have come back to June and we have cut one point four. It's back down to five point four. That's not too bad. Right now, we've cut about two hundred thousand. It puts it down about six point four. It's a change. If you cut another hundred thousand, another two hundred thousand, or two hundred thousand of the insurance, that puts it down to five point nine. We still have seven hundred over. Three hundred. Yeah, five thousand. Last year, we go six hundred and a half.
I had Devon sort of had my make up sheets for us. And those sent employees there. And the reason with two colors, but they were being served to pick out the blue, red, and all the color. One person can wear. And then also the bottom of the cabinet, not exempt employees, starting at four seventy thousand. And then the electric officials set a second.
Well, the range is there. Our acronym at one point five percent. For this year.
So the, so.
In, in the budget.
How much is that? Six or five percent.
That's, that's all we're, if they're not, if they're scheduled to cancel on the reservation.
Yeah, depends on, because they get it. As you see there at the bottom, they increase if it's a one and a half this year. Suggests that if that plus their longevity and longevity figures, correct, to that three hundred, it varies up and down.
It varies.
But that's an average of what you add on to that.
The base pay, Flex River. Mark, you remember?
It's on our.
Fourteen eighty-five, something like that.
Fourteen eighty-five. About, about thirty thousand. So, so what happens if you take the one percent longevity to thirty thousand? So that's thirty through thirty thousand, three hundred dollars. One point five tax rate. That's four hundred fifty-four dollars plus the three hundred. You take longevity on top of your current. So this, for example, it's thirty thousand and three hundred. Four hundred fifty-four dollars plus three hundred, so it's about, about seven hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's where you got the range for.
Hello, Jamie. Yes, Jamie, yes. Yes, you can see there was a time back in those days, we had provided the public safety, the fire officer, the officers, and then the civilians. And that's.
So that number is based on the base table? Is that four twenty-five? Four hundred thirty-five dollars?
That's their, that's their raise. That's their raise.
That's based on, on the base name, right? Not based on yet.
Not, not the longevity.
You're reading the level. Yeah, you had longevity first. And then you paid the one half percent on longevity and the base. So that, that range is pretty close, four thirty-five, four ninety. So I'm figuring one hundred twenty-nine, thirty thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars.
Today just.
Just after we.
You're doing so well.
That's after the, um, the eleven cuts, yes.
Oh, Dr. Jamie, one of the employees, he was two hundred dollars, and then possibly three hundred dollars on duty. And then kept the other employees five hundred until he was forty.
No, they are thinking, look, they got it, it's supposed to be, no, they reduce his salaries. It doesn't, not that much difference. It really doesn't. A hundred people, what should be done, reducing.
But when I took those figures that you just saw, the upper guys, the five hundred, um, if it's to, um, they will be reducing, yeah, to make the asking. So we can still have, you know, under, under fifty thousand.
What would you look at in the, you said that?
A hundred dollar raise, two hundred dollars raise.
Plus their longevity.
Plus a hundred.
Now, we have one problem in some situations on that. We have some situations where there are people, and I think you, that's what, almost make it to mention. We have salary people who are part of the group, what it gives work.
Well, I guess we'll kind of look at that as a starting point, and then that's taken about fifty thousand. We said, so we still need to look through the budget. We have another hundred fifty thousand.
And in one way. So some of the savings is, um, we buy a couple of employees that are no longer here, and they have larger longevity. Um, so there's a little bit of that in that number as well, probably four hundred thousand dollars.
And, you know, excuse me, one or two things, I guess, just throw out to us. We've done three different ways. We declined through the budget, and then one year, we said, go back to the part-time heads. And you, we have to cut one hundred fifty thousand. Where can you cut? What do you have ahead? And what do you do without? Because we don't know what we need and what we necessarily have to have. And if that's a better way of, you know, rather than our just going through and say, well, we're going to cut this, we're going to cut that. Are we setting, one year, I think you and Frank came back, there was two, three of us.
But they haven't been part of it.
Yes, and, and do it.
And, and they just, I guess. And then we worked up the scenario, and then, yeah, so we've done.
Fine, but I think, you know, if the part-time heads go through and look at what they have, I don't think anybody will know what they have to have.
So, you, you're right. And the same situation that I asked June on the council board of workers is she knows better than anyone else.
And we did too, and really, a lot off of there, but I don't know how deals and what's needed and all that. But words will go that it might be that we can still go a little bit lower, but I, I don't want to. The best, the treasure can find. How much you can find?
How much?
That fits two?
That's seven ninety.
No, that's all. That's at the twentieth, well, nineteen officers plus Stacy, um, plus the rest and longevity, that's everything.
That's seven ninety-one plus.
We give it.
About either.
Probably.
About four thousand piece, Jamie. About four thousand piece.
That's all the difference that there is today. I think it's closer to sixty.
On the end control, we got vehicle. Is there any way you think they'll come back, like they have that later on in the year next year?
We're going to try to see if we can't get something yet this year.
I'm sorry.
Oh, this year?
See who you were.
Sorry, um, they did come to the public meeting and ask if they, if the council would reconsider based on the fact that we're going to try to get them something comparable to what they're driving now, just in four-wheel drive line.
For this year.
Possibly, if we, possibly, I mean, but the amount that they're looking at, it would be minimal if we can get five of them. I mean, we're looking at seven thousand dollars or less. And that would be split between us if.
Oh, that's the whole.
Yeah, I mean, we're thinking like seven thousand dollars. Instead of fifteen to twenty, it's more like seven. That's what we're working with. So it wouldn't be a brand new truck. Because it would be a brand new dress. Possibly, possibly. It depends on if there is something out there.
So they wouldn't have that. Now, next year's.
Um, just over sixty thousand. That's wage, pension, the city.
There wasn't enough, that at the public hearing the other day, the decision, so, but they're going to consider it.
Just a thought, Dave, just a thought. Don't worry about it. Right now, we're saying we got to cut another hundred and fifty thousand. My thought is, let's go in that and make them tell us we have to cut it. We have to cut, we have one officer we have to fill in. And that's sixty thousand. So then you got another ninety thousand you have to cut later on. But let's go in and ask for it, and make them tell us we can't have it. And I think we go in, we're going to go in four hundred and fifty thousand, so we. I think, I think we go in, if we don't ask for it.
They tell you, they tell you what to cut.
If we don't, well, if we don't, if we don't ask for it, we won't get it. And if we cut it, cut ourselves a bone, even if it's there, we won't get it. It's only, it's only a little, it's only about two hundred thousand higher than what we got this year. So it's not like it's a huge amount increase for us. I think we go in one hundred and fifty thousand, three, three, four hundred and fifty thousand, and then ask for it. Say we can find some cuts here for these. Assistant chief police, that no longer is Lance.
Asking about that.
Does that.
But Stacy. That is gone. But Stacy, um, let me ask you, you've taken in, we, we have proposed to subsidize the shift commanders or captains a little bit from that, right?
Just one.
And the, uh, the chief investigator.
I still want.
So the two captains are staying at the same pay? Is that what you're proposing in the budget?
Well, I don't know if I did on that. I don't know what I got.
Here it says the captain's, and you were proposing thirty-three, or thirty-three thousand.
You open one on.
Just the one though?
Yeah.
On the forty, whatever thousand, or six thousand on the assistant chief? That was basically just made into that twenty officer position of, correct?
That was, that was where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, it, that went into the overtime, which wasn't much after we figured out the raise on the part-time and all that. Um, this is just the history on the positions. I mean, if you want to keep an assistant chief position, you would have, like you do now, or well, most people, eighteen officers do the assistant chief. Instead, it was going to be nineteen officers and. Correct?
Right now, we have one officer we have to fill in that position.
Correct.
There's an open slot.
And another situation, we're going to do this for a while, the position of the police station to amend the ordinance on the salary ordinance. Because they don't have part-time clerk down there at ten dollars an hour, like the rest of us. If they work anybody part-time, it's thirteen dollars plus time. So if we're looking at hiring a full-time person, might offer all the benefits. Who's hiring a part-time person after thirty-five hours a week, ten dollars an hour? I'd save somewhere. For the time being, see how things go.
To get back to the game, I think if you go in that, that, they'll tell you.
Yes.
Cut where it's at for a good part.
No, what they do, they do is they come back and they just say, this is how much comes off. And it's usually the council. That's where it goes.
So you can go to the council over there. But they will tell you how much.
They'll just say, this is what, what it is for the next. Out of them there.
Like I said, so because of that, they have one place off two that go off a three-year, and that's two thousand. And now we're only ninety thousand away from getting one or two. Not that I don't want to hire, I guess not that I don't want to hire, the first time saying, let's go in and make them tell us. Give them a break. If we cut the budget, if we cut the budget, when we come in there and there's more money available, we won't get it.
If we do, if you do, let it go in the operating balance.
You know, we're going to have to cut it, one more year, if we ask for it.
You get the money, it, it goes in operating balance, and it just, it issues to the service. Where you guys are usually the service.
And you were saying you felt comfortable with that's going then.
I, I'm definitely.
Yes. This year. I think right now. We're already.
On the other side of that, two, four hundred fifty thousand, so two hundred thousand.
Well, that's why I wanted to go to the chief there.
Yes.
She's come.
She's not around yet. Yeah, but still, she's not going to find. Because you have a weak window. She has to, that's, that's the way. She has to.
Well, the way that, that the program was organized last year, the budget is eighteen officers and assistant chief, and a police chief. So what we looked at next year is nineteen officers, which is the chief. So you don't have the four, four to six thousand, which are basically the difference between, the forty-six and the thirty-four thousand. Plus the other, the, the raise for the detective, um, seven hundred dollars. So, so the rest of it went into. Plus she, um, underfunded dispatch, thirteen, twenty-five, and fifty-two. The difference was absorbed elsewhere. So you can't really cut a whole forty-six thousand out of there, because you got thirty-four thousand in another officer's, plus the remainder people that have raised.
Yeah, so Chief Counsel.
She's coming, she's coming, she's coming back, and that's what we need to do because it's, uh.
So, so what you make, what treasure that you have to do is, so if we go in, we're going to cut it back, and we make some eye on identification, if we have to cut, these are the places we like to see that. We don't cut, but if we have to cut, everybody knows how they like to see that. So let's go through, I guess, by the way, then she was, who would have put that first? They already have identified, these are the places we're going to cut if we have to cut.
You're, you're going to.
Whenever you can come back.
Way that you, the way they, you know, now they.
And they, they, they say they have much, and it's so much for each of the others. And.
Oh, we didn't, I'm working, but we don't know what's working. I have any of my.
I guess over two, we've already handled that. We have to cut yours, but. And then they'll have to look through the identification.
But they still have to go through, okay, you're going to have a certain amount that, that give us a figure, and we'll, we've got more here, and we don't, we've got more than that. So where does she decide that she wants that out? That, that, no, 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 you're not. There may, there may, they have to cut more than what we identify. And she has to work, okay, which for this department, which for that department. You're making, her make that decision, rather than he as a county to make that decision.
I, I think I understand what you're saying, Dave. You just want us to go through earmark things to, if we have to cut it, but like I said, I, three hundred, for a chief judgment, because many years I've never figured out the process.
That's the thing, that could get lost.
Charlie isn't actually, has to figure out. I'm not saying your ideas don't rhyme, but make that to.
Yeah, because otherwise, you're, you're asking her to make one herself about that. Yeah, you are, yeah, you are.
Earmark where we.
Okay, but, but she may have to cut more than what you earmarked, and she has to make that decision. Because she does not come back to you to do that.
That, and if we go into a thousand dollars, we have the same situation.
Well, what?
We have, we have the same situation.
But we're not, we're way over there to the, what?
We're out of the picture that, and they go, you're going to cut.
Yes, yes.
We've submitted our budget, we're done with it, and then they say, well, you got to cut four hundred thousand off of it. It doesn't come back to us, they have decided we're going to cut them. And even though he's right, you can earmark things to designate, and that, I don't know, it works, I guess, but.
If it's an earmark, then you might as well cut it. Well, no, I mean, what I'm saying is, I don't know that I want to cut.
Thing is, if you cut it, it's gone.
I understand. So I don't want to cut another officer on the budget, but if we come in, we have to cut the money out, we'll get it, and maybe we don't hire three. But I don't want, I don't want to cut them off the budget.
It's gone.
That's an easy place to get sixty thousand dollars.
The officer's gone, even though they couldn't.
That's what I'm saying, I don't want to cut that off the budget.
I don't, you don't support it because of what it's for.
I don't think so. This is a year to go more than that.
That's what makes that. I'm not the one that does them.
Okay, so. What we were looking at was the difference, that twelve thousand dollar difference was absorbed between overtime, which wasn't much, um, officer clothing allowance, inspector clothing allowance, part-time dispatch, which you guys cut back down to thirty-eight thousand. But the, that's where that twelve thousand was absorbed between. Well, you've gone ahead and taken the part-time dispatch back down to thirty-eight thousand. And that's the one that's new officer clothing and officer.
He may scroll within the session. I can't overattach the officer forward from the word, but I, well, I call Janice, I'll check.
Basically, thirty-eight hundred dollars, thirty-eight seventeen, you got nine seventeen on the overtime. Well, you guys already cut down on the officer clothing from fifteen, twelve, and you took it down to ten.
But now, isn't that?
Two hundred dollars.
No, we did. That's sixty. Okay, so it's down to fifteen.
Sixty, seventy-five.
Oh, six, oh, we had sixty-five. Well, no, we had, well, that was fif, we had fifty there. And if we take the fifty, that's seventy.
Less than sixty, then one thirty-five. We still need sixty-five.
Yeah.
Have point two five in the vertical from police station.
How much?
Point two five.
Two thousand two.
Point two thousand five.
All right. So you're cutting that, if you cut that.
We can make it part-time if need be, if we have to.
So that would allow us to cut twenty-two thousand five.
If you make that, that change into the right number of part-time status.
So that makes, if we did that, that's a reason, well, we set that sixty-five, that's twenty-two five, that's your possibility.
Okay, now, the other one, say, wait, who's talking about, I'm the seven hundred, who's the questioner? And, with the information, assistant chief say this much?
So, that. Forty-two five. Well, you've been, yeah, so.
They're pseudo, they're.
Flight officer council needs a secretary. They got me wearing one. Well, yeah, Scott, man, I do not very good looking at that.
What'd you think? At six o'clock? Seriously? That's why.
Then they're done. I tell you, we look great. Making motions of error. But before we go and cut manpower out and reduce it, I think we need to look at the big numbers first.
Well, just a thought, Barry, why don't we go in, and it's, we, we cut everything but that position, and we go in three hundred and sixty thousand dollars back, and earmark that if we don't get the money, that's a position we don't do.
Right. To try and reduce it, let's go put it in the local council.
That's what we're doing right now, I think, that's what we're talking about. But I mean, if we have to, why don't we go in with that, that position, that, that much more back, and say, all right, if we don't get the money, we won't fill this position. If we get the money, then we, we go.
And to try to save money, make sure we have, we know, we have enough to do a year, we're anticipating the tax revenue that we will receive, which we're only gambling on that, which you never know, then, you know, the street department is much shorter. The, uh, police department right now is two people short.
I think you're going to put, looking at being short, I think you're going to have to look after what's real.
One officer. And maybe hire the one.
We might not be one short, we might never have another one. You're going to have to look at what your financial constraints are.
Well, that's what we're doing.
You know, you might have to not consider anybody short.
Right.
In other words, people retired from this department, guess what, they never come back. They're not short, they're just, that's where we're at now, because that's what our financial.
I'm making a statement based on the manpower that we had in the past.
But I think we have to.
And you've been shy since two thousand and eight.
Actually, it's seven or six, I think.
And then it's just hanging out to a smoke. And that's why you took a big one. See where else we could, right? Starting right now.
What do we got?
Okay, well, let's just go through, and then we'll know, everybody will know what we've individually been talking about. It's been talking here, it's been talking there. Okay, so as we go through. First page. Okay.
Okay, let's start at the top, mayers. Two thousand part-time, we've never used it, what we've always done is utilize someone in their office.
When making goes down.
Well, that's what I mean, or you're using the pay from the city.
Yeah, that's always helped with, um, ours and yours, um, it has, sometimes they all go to pay for that.
Time off, we have to ask about your.
Did you get any patients and stuff there? You've got somebody. Yeah. I think the postage, what I do with postage, no, I'll take one. Postage, and, and some of them, we went and we bought a thousand, one hundred and some dollars worth of forever stamps now. And then, and I took it out of the place afar and sent it to the street, I believe. And then these others, I'll, I'll put together, I believe that here, I'll buy postage, put on the postage meter, because we, everybody uses.
I just thought we, once in a while.
No, no.
It, it was advertising. That's half of our checks. Yes. And, and, and sorry, is the number of this longevity?
That's what the, the one hundred percent.
Yeah. It wants to be two and a half.
It's very hard to kill the. That's, well, but it's going to last because you went to two hundred dollar.
Well, that's. She has figured that out.
She has figured that out, that's why.
But we have made that.
Yeah, that's part of fifty thousand.
And when you're told the mayor, now, that also is, um, employee that we just lost, this guy, she had probably four or five thousand dollars in longevity that is also in a different company.
They would probably, one half, one hundred dollars, which they still have their, one hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yeah, they back to the postage company, they don't pay postage. How many mayers?
But I take that, that's what they take. Now, they will now, they use it down there.
Yeah. That's probably the most classy. That's the highlight of my career.
I will take those money.
That, and being the best.
I'll have to do this year.
All right. That before. I can't, if I just survive that. I still stuck around.
June, you're talking, um, you're going to reduce that from that.
Yeah. That's what I'm doing.
Well, you've already taken that out.
I have to take that off here.
Oh, you didn't take it off of here?
That I'm, we're going to take on to that.
Okay.
And now the workman's comp, we have a halfway decent idea of what the cost is going to be there, right? Is it somewhere around?
It's not bad.
So we changed that.
No, we dropped it.
We dropped it to one hundred and nineteen.
And on the inside, what is that?
The city's portion.
And that's from either her or you.
No.
No.
You have one of these, Mayor. Right, that's she.
That'll show you over that word.
On the left-hand side, there's. That's on.
This is a little word. On better yet after finally salaries, but probably that increases the city's portion of compensation.
And we reduce the longest part of that to thirty thousand.
And that, is that on our, our building?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's all about it. And if they buy anything, you know, do, train vehicle, they'll ask to go long out there too. Well, there might be, but. I will, Google, don't.
Oh, what do you?
Yeah, but they're not charged, yeah, so we better not, we don't have, and then, where I've cut up. Four hundred thousand, and now they don't take trains, they have to move friends out of this year, which I'd say, but, um, and I do, I kind of have to go off of where I'm at in this, because the insurance, master insurance, I was like, don't get paid till, like, you know, every separate. So I don't know how much is going to land on it. That's kind of a in the dark look. No, for sure.
You know, the street lights, the lights.
And I think. I named Chris Chad because of that problem.
Those dudes who says in towns, we pay that for the council.
Yeah, that comes out there.
Who gets, who gets that? For the council.
It's, yeah, it's for the city, it's for the city.
How's that, how's that broken out for the engineer's salary?
It's half now. Half city, one fourth water, one fourth salt.
Okay, where was his pay last year?
The third, third, the third.
That's why it's twenty-eight then.
Yeah.
Well, I know that I do, as a mayor, because we call, we are attorneys, time to time, it's informational, that's a large school.
Yeah, that's one, yeah. We pay.
I understand the reason, why, why do we, why do we take that? Addition, extension, one, extension, I can't, I can't answer that. With the engineer's salary, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering why we're changing that from going from the third to third, to that.
Basically, because the utilities didn't think they was giving enough use of it, and I didn't really either, the way it averaged out, was Lake Street going on, and he spent a lot of time on Lake Street, and he spent time on Van Deen Road, and on other different projects around town, with the street department, you know, uh, new drainage systems like that.
Can't, can't just go off the monkey, what he's done, decide where our salary, I'd say, because he's going, he's going to get his hands involved in the water and sewage and everything else.
And he was watching things.
So I, I don't know, that's crazy, just to take one year's or one and a half years' worth of time, say, this is why we want to change it, because he didn't do anything for us this year. Well, you're going to, and then we're going to end up switching it back.
But there you go, much, I was paid the same way.
There's that.
Yeah. Fourth, fourth.
Well, if they have any work to be done, that was engineer quality wise, it would come out of their budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't done anything with them yet, but it's, it's. He did a lot of work.
Yeah, he's not working.
Right, yeah.
He's done work for the water company and other lines, he's, uh, done work for wastewater, you know, he's been surveying and planning, uh, right now, we're working on the water mine extension from Freeman Road over to Honda area.
I mean, I, I feel one of that, though, if you took what he, what he was paid out of his salary compared to what we paid him, if we had to contract those services, they still send a lot of money.
We're hoping to get a forty thousand out of end up with his salary last year.
I mean, I just, I guess I don't understand, is there a reason we have to take half that, or why?
No. I just, it causes some concerns, it was brought to my attention, and comparing it to my salary, the way it's done, the way that, uh, the, my secretary's done, um, is yours paid that way too, June?
Yes.
Yes, hers is paid that.
In Kathy's.
I, I mean, I'm just thinking, though, if you look at the, the work that was done, it's, they, they more than got a discount based on the salary. That's, well, is that going to be a difference of about twenty thousand dollars, or? Not quite, but.
So the worst three ways.
Yeah. Like it's right behind us.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm not getting any profit until it was twenty fifteen.
Somewhere along that line.
I'd say we go back to thirty, thirty, thirty. My suggestion, I agree. So that was about the, we go back to a third, 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 about sixteen minutes.
Down on this, and then divide it on three.
About fifteen, not quite fifteen. Not quite fifteen, almost fifteen.
Forty-three, six, twenty-five.
That's kind of a in the dark. No, for sure.
You know, street lights, you know, lights electricity.
And I think. I think it's just because of that problem.
And due to cities and towns, you pay that for the council.
Yeah, that comes out there.
Who gets, who gets that I? For the council?
It's, yeah, it's for the city, it's for the city, it's for the city.
How's that, how's that broken out for the engineer salary?
It'll be half now, half city, one fourth water, one fourth city.
Okay, where was his pay last?
It was a third, third, third.
That's why it's twenty-eight then.
Yeah.
Well, I know that I do as mayor, because we call, we're attorneys, in time to find, it's informational, they have same large schooling.
City.
But what's.
Yeah, that's one, yeah, which we pay.
That's, I understand the reason, why, why do we, why do we pay that? I can't answer that.
What's that?
The, the engineer salary, I mean, I guess I'm just wondering why we're changing that from going from a third to third, third to half.
Basically, because the utilities didn't think they was getting enough use of it, and I didn't really either, the way it averaged out. Was Laker Street going on, he spent a lot of time on Laker Street, and he spent time on Van Deey Road, and on other different projects around town with the street department, you know, uh, new drainage systems like that.
Can't, can't just go off the line here, what he's done, decide where our salary lies up, because he's going, he's going to get his hands involved in the water and sewage and everything else.
And pretty washing things.
So I, I don't know, that's crazy just to take one year's or one and a half years' worth of time, say, this is why we want to change it, because he didn't do anything for us this year. Well, you're going to, and that would end up switching it back.
But there you go, much, I was paid the same way.
There's a half.
Yeah. Fourth, fourth. Fourth water, fourth waste water, yeah, city.
Well, if they have any work to be done, that's engineer quality wise, it'll come out of their budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't done anything with them yet, but it's. He's had a lot of work.
Yeah, he's done work, he's done work for the water company and other lines, he's, uh, done work for wastewater, you know, he's doing surveying and planning, uh, right now, we're working on the water mine extension from Freeman Road over to Honda area.
I mean, I, I, if you wanted to bet, though, if you took what he, what he was paid out of his salary compared to what we paid in L C, if we had to contract those services, they still save a lot of money.
We're hoping to get a hundred thousand out of, in on this salary last year for the person.
I mean, I just, I guess I don't understand, is there a reason we have to take half that, or why do we leave it?
No. I just don't, causes some concerns, uh, just brought to my attention, and comparing it to my salary, the way it's done, the way that, uh, the, my secretaries has done, uh, is yours paid that way too, June?
Yes.
Yes, theirs is paid that way.
And Kathy's.
And Kathy's.
I, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, if you look at the, the work that was done, it's, they, they only got a discount based on the salary. That's, well, that's going to be different, so about twenty thousand dollars or.
Or.
Not quite, but.
It's in the most three ways. Like it's way behind us.
Yeah, that's right.
I can get any profit until, what, twenty fifteen?
Somewhere along that line.
I'd say we go back to a third, 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 and that. My suggestion, I agree. So that was a little bit, we go back to a third, 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 about sixteen. Forty-three.
Down on this, and then you're higher than three.
About fifteen, not quite. Not quite yet, almost fifteen.
Forty-three, six, twenty-five.
What are you saying?
Fourteen thousand and. Sixteen dollars. Forty-two dollars.
Have the.
Where's the engineers back? Fourteen thousand.
At the token there is required.
Fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty. That's five.
So our share will be twenty-eight, eight, three, three, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, right? You're forty?
Twenty-eight, eight.
Fourteen, twenty-eight, eight.
Yes. And there's fourteen, seven, eighty-one.
All of us, yeah.
All right, so I'm taking them back to birds.
See, then if we said, we're taking that.
Who was the other one we did a third, a third, a third on your salary? I thought there was another one we did, we went from a third, a third, a third to a.
Now, there is a deal on the trucks, if the street department gets, you apply for new truck, right, Mark? If he gets a new truck, he can possibly use the, uh, when they were traded in, Derek, and still be utilized as. That will take the place of the one that's, the early nineties or late eighties, we still, we have one that's thirty years old.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not, we're not going there.
I'm surprised that he still works here.
Yeah, that's okay.